Good morning everyone and welcome to the annual meeting of the County Council, taking place on Wednesday, the 21st of May 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off their mobile phones or make them silent? And all other electrical devices. Firstly, it is with sadness that I have to formally report the deaths of Alderman Malcolm Pratt, who served on Chester Street District Council between 1971 and 2003. Malcolm was one-time leader of Chester Street District Council and was an honorary Alderman. And we also said our goodbyes to one of our own. County councillor at the time of her passing and former mayor of the City of Durham, councillor Mamie Simmons. Mamie served the former city of Durham for ten years, from 1999 to 2009. Representing the Newton Hall Ward, Mamie was elected to the County Council in 2005 and served for twenty years, until her passing just a few months ago. Along with many others attending Mamie's funeral last month, and the numbers that turned out to say their farewells was touching indeed. She will be sorely missed. Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like you to, I would, sorry, sorry. Can we please stand for a moment's silence? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for this meeting. As with all council meetings, any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would extend a warm welcome to the members of the press and public attending the meeting. We do have a large number of people in attendance today and we have accommodated you as best we can. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, you should not disrupt the meeting. Before we move on to the election of chair, can I also remind the council that speeches can be made on nominating the Chair of the Council only; all other nominations will be moved and seconded without speeches. Can I have nominations for the Office of Chair of the Council?
Yeah, could I nominate councillor Richard Bell, please? Richard's been here twenty years, he's got a wealth of experience, he can't be biased because there's only one person now, and I'd ask that everybody supports that, please.
Thank you, councillor Shuttworth, need a second here? Thank you councillor. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to propose councillor Robbie Roddis. Thank you.
Thank you. I will hand over, are there any other nominations? I will hand over to our head of legal services to explain the procedure.
Thank you Chair and good morning members. So we have two nominations in for the position of Chair of the Council, councillor Richard Bell and councillor Robbie Roddis. The team will load those names into the voting equipment in the order in which they appeared. So it will be one, if you wish to vote in favour of councillor Richard Bell, press two if you wish to vote in favour of councillor Robbie Roddis. There will be a buzzer sound that will indicate that vote is open and I will confirm that the vote is open at that point. We will check to see that all votes are in before the Chair will announce that the voting is closed. Again, if anybody has problems with their handsets, please wave them in the air and a member of the team will come and assist. That's the vote open. Apologies members, I can't remember if I said if you wanted to abstain, it's number three. So it's one for councillor Bell, two for councillor Robbys, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote. We're going to close the vote.
Councillors? Councillor Richard Bell, twenty seven, councillor Robbie Roddis, sixty two, abstentions four. Councillor Roddis is elected to the full position of Chair. Does the council agree the election of councillor Roddis? Congratulations on your appointment, can I invite you to join us on the dais, please?
I, Robbie Roddis, having been elected to the office of Chair of the County Council, declare that I will take that office upon myself and in due and faithfully fulfil the duties of it, according to the best of my judgement and ability. Thank you. I would like to start by making the following quote. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? This is a very great honour and one of the best days of my life. I know it won't be easy and I know at times I will ask myself why I'm doing it. But like every other elected councillor in this room, I recognise that I want to do the best, very best, for the people of County Durham. We don't do it for the money, we don't do it because of some ego trip. Every candidate and every elected councillor who puts their heads above the parapet did so because they wanted to make a difference and improve the lives of the people in this lovely county. I reluctantly accept this role and thank everyone who voted for me. I also understand why others didn't vote for me, but that's democracy. And democracy is a very precious thing, but it's never easy to stay aware through its demands. Everyone holds an opinion and a viewpoint and everyone has a right to be heard. So I would ask for patience and remind everyone, both in this chamber and outside in the county, that we will make mistakes, it's inevitable, but if and when we do, it will be with the best intentions and not for some political or financial gain. And finally, I would ask that whilst in this chamber, I expect everyone, irrespective of their political party, to remember that it costs nothing to be polite and less to be magnanimous in defeat. So I thank you again, thank you. As incoming Chair, it is my first honour to pay tribute to councillor Nicholson and to councillor Joplin. Firstly, I would like to thank councillor John Nicholson for all the hard work and dedication she has given to this role as Chairperson of Durham County Council. I've been lucky enough to have known John for several years and from the outset, I quickly realised that this was a woman who knew her business and could be relied upon for advice. When researching the role of the Chair, one role is to be the conscience of the council. That is not an easy role to accept, but John assured me she enjoyed it most of all. So that is a tribute in its own right to John, to be called the conscience of an entire elected council and to actually enjoy the cut and thrust of debate. Usually behind every successful man, there is always a clever woman, but of course the roles were reversed and in John's case, she had the support of Robert, her consort. The title intrigued me, so I Googled the term consort, which stated that consort is usually the spouse of the reigning monarch. So between being described as the conscience of the council and the reigning monarch, what more can one say? As for Robert, on behalf of Durham County Council, I would like to thank him for his patience and support for the reigning monarch of County Durham. As for Patricia Joplin, I would like to say a huge thank you to the Vice Chair. Most importantly, that is Patricia Joplin, British Empire Medal. Again, this title speaks volumes. Patricia has tirelessly served the people of County Durham and always maintained the very high standards of a public servant. She also makes an exceedingly good cake. So John and Patricia, I would like to say a very big thank you for you, for all your service, for your dedication and hard work and putting up with my questions now and again. So thank you again, thank you. The Chair, apparently that's me, will then invite the group leaders or their representatives the opportunity to pay tribute to the councillors Nicholson and Joplin. And I call on councillor Andrew Husbund, first of all, to speak on their behalf.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Roddis has spoken in glowing terms of councillor Nicholson, John will be a hard act to follow. But I'd like to thank John not only for chairing a council of this size so very well, but also for the service to the council. John has worked tirelessly for the council and her community and in many ways, would be entitled to take a well-earned break, however, the never want to rest, John was ready to take on the next challenge and was elected as Chair of Stanley Town Council at its annual meeting last week. The community she represents on the town council and indeed the town council itself can be assured that they are in good hands. John, thank you. I would also like to thank Patricia for her dedication to the role of Vice Chair. She has been an excellent ambassador for the council and can be rightly proud of her achievements within her local community. Thank you.
I now call on councillor Amanda Hopgood to speak.
Yeah, thank you Chair and thank you John. You have been an inspiration for over two years to the people of County Durham in your role. You took over, over two years ago in the most awful circumstances and you have held that office with dignity, with honour, and you've been a shining example of what the role should be for anyone following in your footsteps. You have shone County Durham to its highest level, whether it be with the King or whether it be with children in the school. You have been amazing and more importantly, you have done it without any bias within this chamber, which is one of the key roles that that position holds. So thank you, thank you to Robert for being by your side all that time and for also having the patience of a saint, quite frankly. So good luck in the next chapter and I for one, as will many people who have worked with you for the last however many years, will miss you immensely in this room. Thank you.
I call on councillor John Shuttworth.
John, you've always been there, you've always been fair and I wish you well for the future and so does all of the group here.
Councillor Rob Crute.
Thank you Chair and on behalf of the Labour Group, I'd like to record our gratitude to John and Pat for their service over the years. I've known both of them for a long time, if I'm not mistaken, we both go back to the first years, back in 2008 when we became the Unitary Authority. And I know from the way that John's led the council from the Chair over the past two years and as Amanda says, under terrible circumstances after the passing of the President. years and as Amanda says, under terrible circumstances after the passing of the President Chair at the time, Councillor Beatty, she's been impeccably fair throughout and you know, any political differences that we've had have been virtually invisible. And I think that's largely down to Joan's understanding and the interpretation of the rules and standing orders of the council, but that school mom voice and the steely gaze that helped put anybody back in the place before they started to rebel. So thank you, Joan, and thank you, Patricia. I wish you well for the future, whatever the future holds, so on behalf of the Labour Group, thanks very much.
Councillor Liz Madison.
Thank you, Joan, and also Pat, for all of your hard work in your term of office. You have both been a credit to the council. Good luck and best wishes from Spennymore Independence, Spennymore and Tuller. Thank you.
It now gives me great pleasure to present Councillor Nicholson with the Past Chair's Medal. Sorry, Patricia, I haven't forgotten. Patricia, you're still there. We now move on to item three on the agenda. Item three, the election of a Vice Chair. Can I have the nominations for the office of Vice Chair of the council?
Chair, I propose Councillor Jackie Teasdale.
Chair, I second Jackie Teasdale.
Are there any other nominations for the office of Vice Chair? Can you please show themselves? Does the council agree to the election of Councillor Teasdale to be Vice Chair of the County Council? Councillor Teasdale, congratulations on your appointment. Can I invite you to join us on the DS, please?
I, Jackie Teasdale, having been elected to the office of Vice Chair of the County Council, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. Just a few brief words. I would like to thank you for your support and I look forward to being Vice Chair of Durham County Council. It's a great honour. Thank you.
If we can move on to item four, which is the minutes. Can I have a mover and a second, please, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of March 2025?
Move the minutes, Chair.
I'll second the minutes, Chair.
Thank you. Are the minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Item five, the declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on this agenda? We then move on to item six, which is the statement from the Returning Officer of the County Councils who were elected on the 1st of May 2025, and this statement is presented to the council for information. Can I ask the council to take note of it, please? Item seven, the Chair's announcement. Members, you will already have noticed that we will be taking some photographs throughout the course of this morning's meeting. The council photograph will be taken outside on the steps of the county hall at the conclusion of the meeting and will take between five and 10 minutes to organise. As always, I would ask that you be patient and it would be very appreciated. As regards the charity, which I understand the Chair of the County Council has to agree to, I haven't taken a decision yet, but I'll obviously announce it very soon because obviously it's very important. And finally, I would like to take the opportunity to remind all councillors of their obligations under the Code of Conduct and members' responsibilities around registering disclosable pecuniary interests and other interests and declaring these at meetings where an interest is engaged. All members are required to complete a declaration of interest form, which is published on your pages on the council's website, and they must be completed by June 3, 2025. The Director of Legal and Democratic Services has covered declarations of interest as part of the members' Code of Conduct training. There is also an e-learning module available to members. If you have any queries in relation to your declarations, please seek advice from the Director of Legal and Democratic Services after the meeting. I would kindly ask you all to address each other in the correct manner during our meetings and would also request that respect is shown from all sides of the chambers at all times. We request that a robust debate is part of a democratic process, but please respect the views of others. Do not point fingers during debate or anything of aggressive nature. It's not appropriate to shout at other councils across the floor during the debate. We all have a microphone, which allows everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. I would ask that all councils remain in the chamber at the end of this meeting and stand whilst I am the Vice Chair and the officers on the DS exit the council chambers at the conclusion of all meetings. Councillors are then free to leave the chamber. However, as I said, today I would ask you to convene outside of the front of County Hall for a group photograph. Thank you. We then move on to item eight, which is the Constitution, a report of the Director of Legal and Democratic Services' Monitoring Officer. And I can ask the Director, Helen, of the Legal and Democratic Service to present the report.
Thank you, Chair. It's a requirement of the council procedure rules that council approves the scheme of delegation insofar as it relates to council functions as set out in Article Four of the Constitution at its annual meeting. Accordingly, the Constitution is presented for approval today. There are no further proposed changes following those that were presented and agreed at the last council meeting on the 19th of March 2025. As set out at paragraph 10 of the report, adoption of the Constitution today does not prevent any further changes being presented during the course of the municipal year or as part of the regular annual review of the Constitution. The recommendations are at paragraph four to approve the scheme of delegation and note that I, as Director of Legal and Democratic Services, have delegated authority in consultation with the Constitution Working Group to make future changes to reflect decisions of the council or other council bodies, to reflect changes in legislation and to correct inaccuracies.
Can I ask for a mover?
Move the Constitution, Chair.
Thanks, Councillor Quinn. And a second.
Yeah, I'll second the Constitution, Chair.
Thanks, Councillor Potts. Does any member have any questions regarding this report? No? Can I ask therefore that council agree to the recommendations in this report? Item nine, to elect the leader of the County Council. Can I have nominations for the leader of the council, please?
Chair, I'd like to propose Andrew Husband, leader of the council.
Thanks, Councillor Grimes. Second.
I'd like to second it.
Thanks, Councillor Querry. Are there any other nominations for the leader of the council? No? If the council agrees the election of Councillor Andrew Husband as leader of the County Council... Oh, sorry. Is there no other nomination? Sorry about that. Do we have an agreement? Does the council agree to the election of the County Councillor Andrew Husband as leader of the council? And therefore, I ask Councillor Husband, congratulations on your appointment. Item 10, leader's announcement of deputy leader and cabinet members. Can I invite the leader of the council to make this his announcement, please?
Thank you, Chair. I would like Councillor Darren Grimes to be Deputy Leader of the council. Cabinet.
Councillor Husband, can we also have the other announcements for the cabinet, please? They are on the screen if you need them.
Chair, I've forgot my glasses. That's the press's fault. I'm going to have to use my phone, I'm afraid. I cannot see. So, without further ado, we've got Councillor Joe Quinn, Resources, Investments and Assets; Councillor Karen Allison, Neighbourhoods and Environment; Councillor Nicola Lyons, Stronger Communities and Belonging; Councillor Cathy Hunt, Children and Young People's Services; Councillor Stephen Gray, Digital and Customer Services; Councillor Tim McGinnis, Rural Communities and Highways; Councillor Howard Brown, Adult and Health Services; Councillor Lindsay Fox, Economy and Partnerships. Thank you, Chair.
Item 11, appointments of council bodies and allocations of seats to political groups. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for the council to appoint the committees and to the Corporate Parenting Panel in accordance with the Constitution and to determine the allocation of seats amongst the political groups and unaligned councillors on the council. Paragraphs five and six of the report set out the legislative requirements in relation to the allocation of seats and the principles to be followed when allocating the seats, but in summary, those principles are that not all seats are allocated to the same group, that the political group having a majority of seats should have a majority on each committee or subcommittee, and that the number of seats allocated to each political group bears the same proportion to the total number of seats as the number of members of that group bears to the membership of the full council. And that subject to those principles, seats are allocated on each committee or subcommittee in the same ratio as exists on the council. It's also a requirement that councillors unaligned are taken into account when calculating the proportional representation. Paragraphs eight to 10 of the report set out how the distribution of seats is being calculated and the determination has been subject to the general principle of rounding up and down so as to be able to give effect to the principles in section 15 of the Local Government and Housing Act 1989. Appendix two sets out the schedule of committees in the Corporate Parenting Panel and the proposed distribution of seats, and appendix three sets out the composition of the Health and Wellbeing Board. The recommendations are set out at paragraph four to the report.
Can I have a mover for this report, please?
I move the nominations.
Thanks, Councillor Grimes. And a second.
Seconded, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak regarding this report? Councillor Hopwood?
Thank you, Chair, and apologise in advance for breaking your first rule, but I would just like to congratulate Councillor Husband on becoming leader of the council and wish him and his cabinet well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak regarding this report? So does the council agree to the recommendations detailed in this report? Right, we move on. Item 12, it's the appointment of Chairs and Vice Chairs of Committees and Subcommittees listed on the agenda. I will invite nominations for the Chair and Vice Chairs for each committee and each Subcommittee in the order that they appear in the agenda. Come, sorry? Come, have a mover, please?
I move this, thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Grimes. A second.
Seconded, Chair.
Thank you.
So just to clarify what's been moved and seconded there, you should have all received a list of nominations that's been circulated around the chamber for all of the positions required to be filled, so they have been moved and seconded. required to be filled, so they have been moved and seconded.
Do we have any other nominations for these roles?
Chair? Chair? Hello, councillor Martin, North Lodge in Chester Street, I'd like to move an amendment that for Chair of Scrutiny, Mark Wilks, is put forward to that, and that council in order to maintain political balance, that John Cook is moved to Vice Chair of Environment and Sustainable Communities, please.
Can I just clarify, when you say Chair of Scrutiny, you mean Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board?
Yes, that is clear.
Okay, thank you, so we will treat that further nomination as an amendment to the table as circulated and we will put it to the vote. If you are in favour of changing the Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board to Mark Wilks and moving the Vice Chair of Environment and Sustainable Community Scrutiny Committee to be John Cook, it will be one to yes, if you are against that amendment it's two, three will to be abstain and of course if you wait for the buzzer we'll confirm when voting is open.
We require a seconder for that amendment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman, councillor David Freeman, Elvira Giles-Gettingen, Shinklevord, I'd wish to second that motion and I thought we'd get round to that at some point this morning.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair, well done. So, that's the vote open, if you're for the amendment, press one, if you're opposed to the amendment, press two, and it's three to abstain. We'll close the vote.
For the amendment was 30, against the amendment was 63, abstentions zero, the amendment falls, are there any other nominations? So, as regards the nominations, obviously the amendment fell, so does the council agree without a further vote on any of the rules? Item 13, appointments to joint bodies and other bodies, 2025, 2026, can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, the purpose of this report is for council to agree the appointments to joint bodies and other bodies to which the council is invited to nominate representatives, the details and criteria for nominating to the different bodies are set out from paragraph four onwards in the report, however in summary I'll take each one in turn. For the Combined Fire Authority for County Durham and Darlington, the membership comprises 21 members from Durham County Council and four members from Darlington, to reflect the size of the electoral representation from each authority and the seat allocations are set out at appendix two, are a reflection of the political balance across the two authorities. The Business Durham Advisory Board acts in an advisory capacity to provide a partnership of private sector and political membership to inform the council's business support function within the Regeneration Economy and Growth Service. Since July 2021, membership has been agreed as the leader, deputy leader and cabinet portfolio holders for Economy and Partnerships, Housing and Assets and Neighbourhoods and Climate Change, with the leader from the largest opposition group and the ability for them to have a named substitute, it's proposed that this membership remains unchanged or acknowledging that there have been some slight changes to the names of portfolios as referenced in the leader's statement under item 10. With regard to the Charter Trust for the city of Durham, the Charter Trust was created on the abolition of Durham City Council to enable Durham to retain its city status, members eligible to be charter trustees were the councillors from the areas comprising the former Durham city electoral divisions. As a consequence of the local government boundary review in 2013, the former Durham city divisions were abolished, 18 members from eight divisions wholly within the original Charter Trust area were appointed as charter trustees, as well as councillors from a further four decision, divisions which were partly within the original Charter Trust but extended beyond it, and representation from those areas was determined on the proportion of the electorate paying towards the Charter Trust precept and where there was more than one councillor in a division who had received the highest number of votes at the last election. Following the Local Government Boundary Commission review between 2022 and 2024, the divisions have changed again, the Ministry of Housing Communities and Local Government has confirmed that they do not consider that the recent changes to boundaries impact on the Charter Trust arrangements, it's therefore for the council to determine appointments to the best fit of the original composition. Using the same principles outlined previously, the members representing electoral divisions wholly within the original Charter Trustees would become Charter Trustees. There are now six areas partly within the original Charter Trustee boundary and it's proposed to make appointments from these divisions on the basis of the updated average elector per councillor ratio following the recent boundary review. So, the number of elected, if the number of electors paying the precept to the Charter Trust is between 1 and 3,991, one councillor would be appointed, if the number of electors is between 3,992 to 7,983, two councillors would be elected, and if it's the number of electors contributing towards the Charter Trust is over 7,984, three councillors would be elected, where there are more members than there are positions, again the councillors with the highest number of votes in the election would be appointed. The Charter Trustee Regulations 2009 make provision for the appointment of three additional councillors as Charter Trustees, in 2009 the cabinet determined that the additional trustees would be the Chair of the council if they weren't already a Charter trustee by right and a cabinet member plus another councillor nominated by the leader. Since May 2021, the administration chose not to appoint the additional trustees, however it's a matter for the new administration as to whether they wish to appoint them, and on that basis the proposed allocations are set out in the report at appendix three. For the Durham Police and Crime Panel, that's a joint committee with Darlington Borough Council again, the panel comprises seven representatives from Durham, three from Darlington and two independent co-opted members, members of the panel must represent all parts of the relevant police area and political makeup of the two authorities, accordingly the proposed allocation of seats is set out at appendix four to the report. The Joint Audit Committee for the Police and Crime Commissioner and Police have a member appointed from Durham and Darlington councils, historically the county council's nominee has been the Chair of its audit committee and again it's proposed that this custom continues this year. With the North East Combined Authority, or NECA, council is required to make a number of appointments to NECA, which was established in 2024 covering County Durham, Gateshead, Newcastle, North Tyneside, Northumberland, South Tyneside and Sunderland. Each constituent council is required to appoint one member to the cabinet, which is usually the leader, plus two named substitutes to attend cabinet in the leader's absence. In March 2024, council agreed that the leader of the council is appointed with deputy leader and portfolio for finance plus the cabinet portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships to be appointed as substitutes, and it's proposed that this arrangement with the equivalent portfolios is replicated going forward. And finally, the report refers to other bodies from paragraph 30 onwards and the proposed arrangements for appointing to those where the council is invited to nominate members. Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph three to the report.
Can I ask for a mover to the recommendations, please?
I'd like to move the recommendations.
Thanks, councillor Husband. Just one thing councillor Husband, can you just clarify regarding, in relation to item three, bracket C, regarding the Charter Trust?
Chair, yes, I agree.
Sorry, Chair, just for clarity, so the intention is to appoint to the three additional trustees?
That's correct.
May I have a seconded for the recommendation moved by the leader of the council?
I'll second that recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Grimes, does anyone have any questions regarding this report?
Apologies, unfortunately my internet connection has failed, so just for completeness, it's my understanding that the three additional trustees to be appointed are councillor Roddis as Chair, councillor Nicola Lyons as the member of the cabinet and there was a third member. Councillor Marylin Franklin? Thank you, so it's those three additional.
Can we have a seconder, please, to this?
Chair, I second that recommendation.
Ask councillor Grimes, so can I ask the council to agree to the recommendations, please? Thank you. We'll lead on to item 14, which is the dates of the council meetings, can I ask the council to agree to the suggested dates of the council meetings for 2025, 2026 as printed on the agenda? Thank you, thank you. That concludes today's business and thank you all for attendance.